At the Town of Olds regular council meeting on May 9th, a land use bylaw was passed allowing adult entertainment to be offered by an uptown Olds nightclub. The Texas Mickey Bar was seeking a change in the existing land use bylaw, which would give them the opportunity to offer adult entertainment, specifically strippers, for their customers. The manager of the nightclub, which caters primarily to college students and is closed during the summer months, claimed that to enable them to stay in business, she needed to offer alternative entertainment to draw audiences. This would be the only nightclub in Olds to offer up this type of entertainment. A previous request in 2008 had been denied. The request is being seen as controversial, and opponents ranged from parents to the local Uptown Olds Business Association. A recent poll by the Olds Alberta newspaper resulted in a majority of respondents voting for the change in the land use bylaw, which is for this one location only. After presentations from the public gallery, both for and against the change in the bylaw, and discussion by the council, it was voted in with a four yes and two no vote, with one councillor absent.
All right, page 42 is item 5C on your agenda, and it is the land use bylaw amendment for bylaw 2016-07. We will begin with a public hearing. And I will, well, first of all, I have a pecuniary interest from my council. Section 172 of the Municipal Government Act says that you may not take part in a discussion and decision-making on any matter in which you have a pecuniary interest. The legislation attempts to ensure that you are not discriminated, either for or against, by virtue of your membership on council. You may disclose that you have an interest, and it's general nature, or you are to abstain from any discussion or matter from voting, or you are to leave the room until the matter has been dealt with, and you should make sure that your abstention is recorded in the minutes. And you're handing us something for this? After the deadline?
No.
Okay, so we'll add those to your discussion, ladies and gentlemen. I hereby declare this public hearing for bylaw, land use bylaw 2016-07, open. And we are dealing not with an application. I'm just reminding you that this is a land use amendment for use, not an application. I would now ask the development officer to explain the purpose and effect of the proposed bylaw.
Thank you, Your Worship. Yes, bylaw 2016-07 is a site-specific amendment to 4710 50th Avenue, currently operating as the Texas Mickey Bar. It is in the central commercial area, and also the Uptown Olds area and redevelopment plan area. Basically, the application is proposing to offer as a permitted use the use of adult entertainment to the existing use of a drinking establishment in order to provide occasional exotic dancer entertainment. Under the current land use bylaw, the current definition of adult entertainment is "any premises or part thereof wherein live performances, motion pictures, videotapes, video discs, slides, electronic or photographic reproductions, the main feature of which is nudity or partial nudity of any person, are performed or shown as a principal use or an accessory or similar use to some other business activity which is conducted on the premises." If the applicant is successful with this application today, she would then apply for a development permit for an application for a change of use to add adult entertainment to this property. We did circulate the application internally and to 26th area adjacent landowners as well. We received various letters of concern that are attached in your agenda, including, I do believe there's three that just got circulated by Chief Operating Officer Scott Chant. There's also letters of support in your agenda package as well. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. I will now explain the procedure and the rules to be followed for this public hearing. Presentations before council shall be brief and to the point, limited to five minutes. Council shall not allow cross-examination of persons giving information, and it will not be necessary for the persons giving information to verify his or her qualifications. Council may ask questions of the speakers after each presentation for clarification purposes. No debating or questions from the floor will be allowed. No written or verbal submissions will be received by council after the public hearing is closed. Persons that will be addressing council will state their name and address, indicate if they are speaking on their behalf for a client, company, or citizen group. I will now call for the first time those in support of the proposed bylaw. Please use the microphone. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Your Worship. Let me start off by saying thank you for giving me the opportunity to come forth again and present myself as Jen Casavant, the bar owner of the Texas Mickey Bar. I am coming today in hopes of being granted this proposal as a way of keeping my bar alive and not shutting my doors down for good. Texas Mickey Bar has been established since November 2005, which before that was Hay City Saloon since 1992. This place of establishment has brought people from all over Alberta, from south of Calgary to north of Red Deer. And it being a college bar, it's come from near and far all over across Canada. My bar has been established since 1992, before most of the Uptown Core shops even existed. During this time, it was not defeating any morals in this town by loud music and my blinking outdoor lights. My hours of operation are late nights when most, I mean, all the shops are closed up, except for the liquor store down the street. In 2008, I came to you, which I'm sure most of you people are in the same committee. You denied my application stating a big part was the morals of this town and the high school being right behind my bar. I understand the high school part, but this town used to have adult entertainment at the Yak in which I don't believe it corrupted the morals of the town. Now the school is gone, and the reality is to the 21st century. And I ask you to find it in your hearts, with the economy that it is and the struggles amongst businesses, especially the bar industry, that adult entertainment should be allowed at the Texas Mickey Bar. For all the people against my ideas are mostly the elderly people who don't support my bar anyway. They have never stepped foot in my bar and don't care about bars. They are the people that are in bed before my bar even opens. But for the people who do support me, they've written letters and are here today to support my ideas for harmless fun entertainment. Please understand with the acknowledgement of prohibiting the town bylaw, I've already had male exotic dancers in my bar establishment for the past 10 years. And most of the older ladies love the show and ranted about it, and were always inquiring when the males were returning. Did that hurt the town morals or value of the town in the last 10 years? I also knew the Legion in the past few years had male exotic dancers as well. I want to reassure you that it's a young college town. You can't just cater to the elderly people. You must cater to the young generation that built this town by the college. This town thrives on the college, and without the college students, this town would not be the growing town it is today. My bar has represented a fun atmosphere and environment these college kids and local town residents feel safe coming to and continue to go to because it's the Texas Mickey Bar. Where there is a college, there must be a fun place for them to enjoy. Without this bar in this town, you will see in the following years to come the impact you will be faced for, or with the mischief they will get into when other establishments can't hold the volume of the customers my bar can. This bar has a history to cater to the young students, but now I'm seeking a new entertainment in hopes to cater to all ages. Don't close out my idea of adult entertainment when this is my last resort to make this bar survive and success. It will bring people from all over the areas to keep my bar, shut a lot of people out of work. I hire a lot of college students as well as locals. I bring a lot of money to other businesses to buy supplies and promote my bar. I promise you I will not turn this bar into a strip joint as the Uptown Core perceives it. This is not my demeanor. This bar is known as a college bar, and I will never take that away. We will continue to cater to the karaoke lovers on Wednesdays and theme Thursdays for the college, but I'm trying to bring something new and something fun to the town to make my bar survive on weekends, as it is only a seasonal bar. People who enter the bar on these special nights will be well aware of the entertainment that is going on. I will have extra doorman on duty to protect the dancers, and there will be absolutely no touching. My dance floor is enclosed and will be monitored. I look at it as harmless fun and entertainment has been around for decades. Nudity is beautiful, and if you don't have a mind to it, then avoid the bars on these special nights. All the businesses that I've dealt with have told me right to my face the town should focus on mischief and drugs, not harmless fun that is going on indoors, not outdoors of my establishment, where you must be 18 years old, and ID is required to enter my establishment. And you clearly have the choice to avoid it or enter it. Remember, I'm a nightclub, which opens at 9:00 PM, not a daytime bar. I will also promise I won't advertise any establishment outside my establishment with neon ladies waving and big signs stating "strippers here." I will never demean the Uptown Core and draw that kind of pornography to the town. I was raised as a Catholic, and I understand moral value, too. I want adult entertainment once in a while, and that is it. I'm not turning the Texas Mickey Bar into a strip club, never. I'm a single mom of a three-year-old son. I've been, and I'm doing everything to survive and not struggle. I was brought up and raised by parents who were bar owners as well. My mom tells me during the 70s of her time operating this bar, there was a major beer strike, and the zinc and copper mine shutting down was a huge impact in local jobs and businesses, and their only hope for survival as a bar owner was adult entertainment, and it brought people there from all over. The liquor laws are much different back then than it is today, but they are here to tell me they survived this bar for 23 years. Their main focus was not on adult entertainment, but live bands and good report to the town, the town locals. Adult entertainment did no harm at all to their town of Kimberley, B.C., which is the size of Olds is today. My main focus will not be on adult entertainment either, just something brand-new to this bar. Who knows? It may never work, but it's worth a try. The Gaming and Liquor Commission states as long as I have the VLTs in my establishment, or I don't have the VLTs in my establishment, then adult entertainment should be allowed. I ask this one last time. Please, adult entertainment in the Texas Mickey Bar as a new, fun, harmless entertainment to this town, as it's my last resort, is to shut my doors down for good. Without this last resort, I can't afford to remain open and operating orders as my lease rent has increased, the overhead bills keep piling up, and the economy is suffering, which makes my bar suffer for the size it is. Thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you. You got the name okay, Marcy? Good. Thank you very much for your submission. And I will ask for a second time those in support. Well, I'm not going to deny the fact that they consensously, just unanimously, put their hand up, other than the fact that they chose not to all come and speak at the same time. Would one of you like to come and speak? Okay, the podium's yours.
I just wanted to say...
Your name, please.
It's Bonnie Flanders, sorry.
That's okay for the record. And you're speaking on your behalf, or as a consensus?
On behalf of the Texas Mickey Bar and Jen Casavant. I just wanted you to consider that there is no other place to hold the amount of kids from the college and what it would do to the town if there was no place for them to go, and where would they be? The other bars in town can't hold that amount of kids, and what it would cause on the streets of Olds Alberta. And they love coming there and love everything about it. So I'd like you to consider that, please. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you very much. Okay, I see one more. Are you in support, sir?
I am.
Would you like to come to the podium, please?
I will.
So that was the Citizens Group, Marcy, on behalf of... And just state your name for the record, please.
My name is Gilbert Odette. I live here in Olds. I'm speaking on behalf of myself and on behalf of Jen Casavant. Thank you, Your Worship, honored councillors. I've been a patron of both the Hay City Saloon and the Texas Mickey for the past 13 years that I've lived here in town. I am also a gay male who, on occasion, enjoys dressing colorfully and flamboyantly. And I know of no other establishment in town where those of the LGBT community can go and enjoy themselves and feel safe in a harassment-free environment. I have friends who are transgendered, transitioning from male to female, and from female to male. They have been to the Texas Mickey and have told me that they feel completely safe there, non-judged, accepted, and loved. Some of you, I know of one councillor who has heard me sing and knows that I love singing. And some of those here in support of Jen are also singers. Taking away the Texas Mickey Bar would be taking away not only a fun, safe environment for those of the LGBT community here in Olds and from abroad who come to the college, but also a chance for those of us who love music and love performing, to give us a chance to do so however we please, whether that be as a male, as a female, in drag, or however. We have so many people here today who love this bar. I have friends who are also BMXers and bikers who would go to the Hay City Slam, which was started by the Hay City Saloon. So many people love this bar. Jen has accepted me unconditionally and has encouraged me to be strong and be true to myself. And I cannot think of any other place in a small town like this where I can feel free to be myself. I thank you, Your Worship, honored councillors, and thank you for your time. And please give this proposal consideration. Thank you.
Thank you for your time, and thank you for coming to the podium. All right, we're going to move on, please. And just a reminder, if you do have your cellphones on, maybe you might want to turn them off for the sake of everybody that is here today for this hearing. I would now call for the first time for those opposed. The first time for those opposed. Second time for those opposed. Thank you. Please come to the podium and state your name.
My name is Janie Olson. I'm of Olds, Alberta. I would just, I guess I would just ask the council to consider the location of this proposal, thinking that our downtown is somewhere we want to be proud of. And I understand the application or proposal at foot, and I understand that the economy is, you know, a tough place, but my understanding is that this might only potentially prolong the business for a very short time. And to make a change to the bylaw, with hopes of that doesn't seem as a reasonable choice for changing that bylaw. I would just state that I would like to see it upheld.
Thank you. And I will call for a second time then for those opposed. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Worship. My name is Brent Riley, and I live here in the Town of Olds. I'm speaking on behalf of myself and my wife.
Thank you.
We would ask that the proposal be rejected. We had the privilege of raising two daughters within this community and are very proud of this community. And it's our feeling that this kind of activity begins to objectify women's bodies in a way that we simply don't want to see perpetuated in our community. It was our privilege, again, to be able to raise daughters within an environment that did not occur, and we would like to see other families continue to have that privilege. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Now I will call for the first time for those persons deemed to be affected. Persons deemed affected? A second time? Hearing none or seeing none? Okay, please come to the podium and state your name.
Good morning.
Good afternoon.
Sorry.
You have to speak into the mic.
Oh. My name is Angie McLean, and I've never seen anything at the Texas Mickey Bar that was inappropriate. And I am a mom, and they do attend school in Olds, but I lost them through domestic violence. And so one of my reasons for attending Jen's establishment is for therapy. I sing. And I never see anything inappropriate, like I said. And I don't believe that what she's asking is anything inappropriate because, like I've told you, there's never been anything in my experience where there's been any wrong behavior. And it's just kind of a happy place for a few friends. And, like I said, it's therapy for me. I like to sing and play piano. And I lost that privilege. When I was, when I lost my home, I had a piano. And so I play piano for seniors' homes. And then I sing when I can, just so that I can have a little bit of enjoyment from everything that I've lost. And so I just wanted to come on behalf of Jen and support them and the other ones that go. Like I said, there's a group of close-knit friends, and it's really just a night out once in a while. And my lawyer asked me, she said, "Do you ever do anything for fun?" And because it seems like I've been going through quite a depression with losing my children and fighting in court. And it's just a nightmare for a mother. And I said, "I do sing karaoke," and she's with the Supreme Court of Canada. And she just, she said, "That's good. That's good for you and good when you can get out and play piano," and things like that. So I just wanted to have a little say.
Thank you. I would take it then that you're in support?
Yes, definitely.
Okay, I did see you come in late, so that was a good opportunity to fit you in there. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for coming. Very good. All right, and lastly, did I say second time already for deemed affected? Good, I did. Oh, one more? Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Lisa Maciver, and I'm a resident of the Town of Olds. And I'm a mother of young children. We have moved to this town from a larger city. We used to live in Calgary. One of the reasons that we moved to a small town is because we wanted to move to a place that was safe to raise children, a place for them to run on the streets, to be out and about, that kind of stuff. And I believe that allowing this amendment to pass would bring people to this town that are the exact reason that we left the places that we did. And I know that it's bringing people from north and south, far and wide, kind of thing. And I believe that the people that would be coming to enjoy adult entertainment aren't maybe the kind of people that we would want to have around our young children. And I know there are a lot of young children in this town. When we first moved here, we went out at Christmas time, and I saw young kids walking around outside by themselves. And I was very encouraged to see that this was the kind of town it was. And I think that moving forward with that would bring, as I said again, the kind of people that might not really portray a safe thing for my children. I have two young daughters. I also think that it's causing women to be objectified. And I think that I don't want people doing that to my children, and that is not the kind of place that I would like to raise them. So thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, ladies and gentlemen, I'm now going to open the floor for council comments. And would give the opportunity to any of the council to speak at this time. Counsel Duryea.
Thank you, Worship. I have a question for the owner of the establishment in question. Do you serve food at that establishment?
Oh, yes, we do. But just minimal of food on busy nights.
Further, Your Worship?
Absolutely. Please move forward your questions, and then we'll move around the table.
Thank you. Have you considered looking at the opportunity to make the Texas Mickey Bar a well-known, well-appreciated food establishment to help you in your plight?
I'm not really focused on the food because I don't have enough knowledge of a full kitchen. There's a lot of Greeks in this town, and they're the best cooks. So I can't, I'm a white person. I just, I can't compete with that, right? So with having so many restaurants here, people don't... I used to do a buffet that I got from SoBe's all the time on Fridays, and it was a free buffet just to get people in. Nobody considers coming to my bar for eating purposes. I've even had, you know, hockey games and stuff. A pub is a pub, and a nightclub is a nightclub. So I could open a full kitchen, but it wouldn't bring the people. That's what I believe.
Thank you. Are you done, Counsel Duryea? All right. Further questions? Counsel Harper?
Yes, Your Worship, this is still part of the public hearing, correct? So we're not really allowed to cross-examine the other witnesses? Is that correct?
No, no. That's procedures to be followed for presentations from the floor.
Okay.
This is council's time. This is time for council comments or questions.
So I do, yeah, I just need clarification on that.
Thank you.
So I do have some questions of our planning department. So could those questions be asked now?
Okay, this is the time that council asks questions for clarity.
Okay, first item for clarity to our planning department was an email that was sent as part of the packages, that actually the email was sent on May the 9th. I believe that was after the public hearing evidence should be closed, correct? So we should ignore that particular email that was sent to us?
It was sent today, and it just circulated during the public hearing? Are we not allowed to do that? Mr. McGinnis?
Okay, I thought they had to be submitted prior to the public hearing. Okay, good enough. The other question is, could, do we have currently on our books the allowable use in the central commercial district for adult entertainment at any of the locations, i.e. at any of the other bars?
Thank you. Through the chair, no. Adult entertainment is not a listed use in either permitted discretionary in the central commercial area, only in industrial, light industrial at this time.
Oh, okay. So I guess that makes very curious. Is there a way that a land use amending bylaw can only be on a temporary basis? Or would that be dealt with under a development permit? This is points of clarification for me. Thank you.
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Maybe Mr. McGinnis could address that.
Thank you very much, Mr. McGinnis.
So this amendment would be by way of bylaw, and that bylaw could be rescinded?
Continue, Counsel Harper, continue.
Okay, further clarification then for rescinding bylaw, would the Town of Olds have to go through the same process? Having a public hearing, having it advertised, all of that process?
Right. Section 606 of the MGA says that whatever process is used to enact a bylaw has to be used to rescind the... has to be used to rescind the bylaw.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Barrishell?
Thank you, worship. I, while I support both, you know, or sorry, I support, I appreciate both arguments on this side. I'm of the opinion that if you don't want to go, don't go. I, I'm confident I have a pretty good idea what this Cassavant wants to do with their bar. And we've done it in our community. And I, too, am glad Counselor Harper, as usual, has the foresight to be thinking ahead for me. But she, as far as something that we could take a look at, because I think that some of the things, some of the concerns may be proven to be unfounded at the end of the day. And if they are, then we can take a look at it at a later date and perhaps rescind the bylaw. That's my two cents.
Thank you. Did I see you put your hand up? Okay. So what are you asking then? Are you, are you, you're, are you directing administration? Okay. Okay, so... Yes, we are still in the public hearing. We're just, and I'm going to wait until my counselor comes back. She's here now and then give her final option to speak. Would you like to speak, Counselor Bennett?
Thank you.
No further questions or comments at this time. Then we will ask the development officer to make final comments, please.
No comments, your worship.
No further comments? All right, I will declare the public hearing closed. And we'll move forward with the bylaw. We are looking for second reading for bylaw 2016-07, please. Counselor Barrishell?
Okay, I have so one question. So if we're to just go ahead with the bylaw and if it was to pass, it could be, we would just, you wouldn't be anything in the motion as to a temporary, it would be a bylaw, and then the council would change it. Is that correct?
But it is specific to this, Mr. McGinnis, would you explain that, please, to council? Specific to this, this facility?
Correct. So it would be specific for this municipal address. And then the application would come forward. So the application would go to the development officer or the development authority. And that would be the development officer if there were no variances required, or it would be MPC if it is a discretionary use or variances are required. And the development authority can do one of three things with that application. They can approve the application, they can deny the application, or they can approve the application with conditions. So that's the process to actually have the application approved. If council wants to rescind this bylaw, then we would bring it forward and it would go for a first reading for rescinding and we'd go through a public hearing as well.
Counselor Harper and then Counselor Barrishell.
I was just going to make a motion.
Go ahead. Counselor Barrishell?
Thank you, worship. I move that second reading be given to bylaw 2016-07.
Thank you, Counselor Barrishell. Further questions or comments? Counselor Walsh?
You know, this is a very difficult bylaw to support, especially when the business is seemingly in trouble. This is not about a business. This is about a land use bylaw. And that's the difficulty I have with it. I know in the visions in the future, adult entertainment is allowed in this town, but not in this district. And that's the issue that we have to deal with. And this proprietor sounds like has a lot of support, but it's not about the proprietor, because if you could sell that business and somebody else can come in and, and once that bylaw's in place, that bylaw's in place. And it can be done, used to some benefit that this present proprietor would not even think of doing on a club like this. So that's the hard part in making this decision. So unfortunately, I can't support it, because going through a rescinding process, it's not a legitimate way to create a one-off. And then this is a one-off. This is, this was what makes it difficult. You know, what happens when the flames next door decides their bar? You know, then they make an application. So these are issues that we deal with, with the land use side of it. You know, I feel for the business side. I understand how hard it is to run a business and maintain it. And this proprietor is doing a really good job, but I just can't support this bylaw the way it is.
Any further comments?
I do understand, in listening to the public hearing, that the proprietor also does want to work very hard in keeping a populace of the community able to meet in her establishment. She also noted that she is aware that it might not ever work and she's taking a chance. I also know that the public and the community, from my years of being a mayor, do dictate the success and use of an establishment. And yes, this does make it difficult, because it's the process through our government that we have to take when we, when we build bylaws that affect the town as a whole. And it's difficult, but it's difficult for sure. However speaking, I still believe that we have rights for society and that I don't want to be the judge to have to say that, that I could deny somebody of their rights. We are a growing community. And I believe this community will dictate the success and use of this bar. Thank you.
If there's no further comment, I will then call for second reading. Those in favor? Those opposed? That is carried. Third and final reading, please. Counselor Bennett?
Thank you, worship. I move that a third reading be given to bylaw 2016-07.
Thank you. Those in favor of third and final reading. Those opposed? That is carried. Thank you for your time, ladies and gentlemen. And we will move forward with our business. You're welcome to stay. We'll give the room, we'll take a seven-minute recess. That gives time, the room time to clear. Thank you.
Mayor Judy Doll spoke with local media after the council meeting.
The land use amendment was for a use of adult entertainment. I read through all the material. I also noted that in our bylaw request for decision from our administration that it's very well-known that the RCMP and the fire department, et cetera, will be moving in and out of there frequently. I certainly did not have any grounds to stand on that would choose to oppose this. And I feel that I certainly do not want to be the judge in whether adult entertainment is going to pick or choose people that are citizens and human beings and perhaps live a different lifestyle than any other person in this community. I think rights are rights. And then I didn't get a feeling that there was any persons being, that it was unsafe.
The Uptown Olds committee did send a letter opposing the amendment. Are you concerned about any negative implications on that relationship?
Well, absolutely not. I mean, I work for 10,000 people. I was elected to work for 10,000 people in this community. I believe that there was nothing that proved to me that it was going to be unsafe. I didn't see any Uptown Olds people here today, were they here? I would have liked to have heard some of their comments. However speaking, they also did a survey that was in the paper. And the results came back that 60% of the people that did the Uptown Olds survey were in favor. It didn't say that it was unsafe there to me either.
For the bylaw itself to come through, you know, how unique is it for the town of Olds to have something like this asked for from a business in the town?
Well, this has been asked before, as you heard today, and it was denied in 2008. There was a school there. It's been brought forward once again. And council is looking at this as, you know what, we are going into the 21st, like we're in the 21st century. We are a growing community and we're most certainly not going to pick and choose what establishments we feel are going to make it. The society and the community as a whole, the citizens of this community will make that decision, not me.
Olds Community TV, your go-to channel for news and information in Olds Alberta.